Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Daniel Williams. My pronouns are he/him/his. I'm the policing policy advocate at the American Civil Liberties Union of New Mexico, and I really appreciate a couple minutes, and I appreciate the timer because I have no internal sense of time. And so just to sort of preamble what I'm going to say, I think the first thing I want to say is that we at the ACLU understand concern about safety in our communities. That concerns are real. We're all New Mexicans. We all see the same things that our neighborhood, that our neighbors are seeing that is causing concern, and all of us want and deserve to be and feel safe in our communities. We recognize that the criminal legal system isn't the only way to build safety in our communities. In fact, often it makes us less safe to rely too heavily on the carceral system and not to invest in more meaningful infrastructure for safety in our communities. And so real safety isn't just about how we respond to criminalized behavior. It's also about economic justice and food security and housing and healthcare, including mental health care and education and more. So with all of that said, I know we're here to talk about policing, but just a reminder that we see this as part of a much larger infrastructure. So the ACLU of New Mexico believes that civilian oversight of the police can be a very good thing. We also recognize that that's hard to pull off well, and that civilian oversight mechanisms can become part of the status quo. And so we have a few things that we look for when we think about civilian police oversight, and I'm going to quickly go through these, and then I have a handout that you can look to for more information if I go through it too fast. One is independent board membership. This is something that Councilor Bencomo just referred to. Broad scope to review complaints. Independent investigatory authority. Discipline that sticks. Findings of facts that determine discipline. The ability to review and make recommendations related to policies and practices. Secure funding. Normally, what we recommend is that the funding for a CPOC be pegged to the funding of the PD. Due process protections for officers and public access and reporting to and by the commission. This is mean that we see many of these things in the proposed ordinance, and we think that's fantastic, and we hope that as you're moving forward and thinking about what kind of action you want to take on this proposal, these are the things that you keep in mind. We also recognize that any kind of action around oversight is, again, only part of one, one piece of the puzzle around policing in Las Cruces. And so I also want to briefly touch on a couple other opportunities that we think Las Cruces has to take action to keep all of us safe with regards to our policing. So one is related to use of force. We think that there is a real opportunity for Las Cruces to take action here. Of course, there are two Supreme Court cases, Graham v. Connor and Tennessee v. Garner, that are sort of guideposts for minimum standards for use of force policy, but those don't constrain jurisdictions from adopting higher standards. And so that's something that we would advocate that Las Cruces look at doing, is looking at adopting a higher standard than what's required by federal law. So we would advocate a necessary standard requiring that force only be used when necessary. We'd also advocate that policy expressly prohibit the use of deadly force against the person who only poses a risk to themselves or their property, and that policy explicitly require the use of reasonably available de-escalation tactics and techniques prior to using deadly force. We'd also advocate that policy require that officers stop or reduce the level of force as the individual reduces their resistance or as a threat of harm abates. We think that one thing that policymakers such as yourselves and the community could benefit from is increased data and transparency. So we'd love to see the police department and the city collecting and reporting more comprehensive data, including demographic data related to stops, searches, arrests, and uses of force. And then finally, we think that there's always opportunities for us to look for ways to reduce interactions between the police and members of the public, particularly people who are in mental health crises or people who are experiencing homelessness. So we're really excited about Project Light and about the progress that y'all have made in that regard, and we hope that the city will continue to assess Project Light and consider opportunities to expand non-police responses. So with nine seconds left, I'm quite proud of myself for timing it that precisely. I'm going to give the clerk the handout, if that's okay, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so you're done with your questions?
For now, I am. I think Counselor Abeta had questions, and then I think I have a couple more comments.
Counselor Abeta.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you as well for the presentation. I appreciate you looking at our city charter to see how everything kind of coincides. I'm not sure if you also saw we have standards, policies, and procedures as well within that. My view and interpretation of our charter, I think, perhaps is a little bit different. And so when entertaining this conversation, it's definitely something that I would want us to look at for legal. As you mentioned, with Section 2.4 general powers, it does state that unless something is explicitly directed, then it is under our purview for counsel. However, this is an area, when it comes to personnel matters, where there are explicit directions on how we engage and interact. You even quoted and mentioned it with that Section 2.05, Section C, under resolutions, shall be adopted by the council. And, sorry, I'm going on to page eight, sorry. Section C is interference with administration. Neither the mayor, council, nor individual councilors shall in any manner usurp the administrative authority of the city manager set forth in Article III. So when you go through to Article III, it's Section 3.02b, that's on page 11, you can look and see the city manager is subject to removal by us because that is our one employee. But when it comes to powers and duties under that, that the powers and duties that the city manager have is that of any sort of removal or administrative affairs of personnel. So with that in mind, I am curious to see how a oversight board integrates with that sort of item when they want to look at, because what it's asking for in this ordinance is to look at HR personnel files. That's something that we, as councilors, don't even have access to. And as you've mentioned before, when oversight boards don't have access to those items, which it seems that there's probably a legal reason why they don't have access to it, then it makes them less effective, which therefore leads me to think that there are other tools and mechanisms in place that help with accountability and transparency that go beyond this type of board.
Peter, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No.
Too much, probably. First of all, what you said, I think, confirms that although the board could not discipline somebody or discharge somebody, they can opine. You asked actually a couple of questions. Let me throw some in that's relevant that I had wondered about and we learned from the Boulder people. The people on the commission, and not everybody on the commission works on each case, but they sign a confidentiality agreement with regard to any personnel files.
We also have confidentiality in closed sessions, and we are still not allowed access to those. So I am curious to see how that coincides with our charter.
Well, I think that might present a problem, but most of the documents we're talking about are not personnel files. They would be, they might be placed in somebody's personnel file, but they're basically about the cases. So I think, I think that's a fair question. I don't, I think it's a question that falls into the how do we do this, not this is a deal breaker category, because it might be that at the end of the day, personnel specifically, and I'm not saying we'd be asking for these anyway, but specifically like a supervisor's valuation of somebody working under her would not be available to the board. On the other hand, a lot of documents that are considered confidential that have to do with a case that's ongoing would be. That's a sort of partial answer, and if there's part of your question that I didn't address, please remind me.
No, that's fine. Dr. Green, I think wants to say something as well.
I serve on the Law Enforcement Academy Board, which certifies and decertifies officers who've been accused of misconduct, and we see not, we do not see their personnel files, but we do see the complaints that come forward as a result of the investigation of the cases. So we're not looking at their personnel records. We're looking at records that have to do with the cases and the complaints from, either from the citizens or something that has to do with the case itself. We don't look at their personnel files.
And are you seeing that in concurrence of when the case is in active status, or is it only afterwards?
We're seeing cases that have gone through Internal Affairs and have now been sent to the Law Enforcement Academy Board to decide whether these officers will continue to be police officers or not.
Okay. And with that in mind, one of the sections here in the ordinance says that jurisdiction of the board shall be concurrent of that in investigations. So how is there protection and integrity of a case if it is being done, if it's being viewed concurrently?
I don't know that it's case, that's a reactive approach. What we're hoping to do is something that is more proactive, and if there are consistent and continuous complaints of, for misconduct, excessive use of force specifically, of officers, we can hopefully avoid the inevitables of an officer, a rogue officer, killing somebody before it happens, is what I would like to see. We're not looking to react, but we're trying to be more proactive.
And would that mean that the board would potentially make a decision on an investigation before an investigation is closed out on the city personnel side?
Yes, that's a possibility. I think the broad scope of the board is, as Dr. Green was saying, but in certain situations, yes, that might happen. It might be that they would only give that to the Internal Affairs investigator for his or her consideration until such time as the city had concluded it. But it, but the city, the board should not have to wait until, you know, what are we looking at with the Baca case, 13 months and counting, while that investigation's still going. The board should not have to wait that long.
And what has happened in your research with, does any other model use this where it's concurrent and that the oversight board determines if somebody is guilty or not guilty before it has been done through due process in the legal system?
I believe so, but I'll try to get you, you know, specific cases.
And then I would like to know the liability risk that these municipalities have had to have. I have strong concerns against this as well.
Concerns against what?
Liability with the concurrent of what is the liability if we have findings before the legal process has been established. And then I would like us to look, excuse me, thank you. The other portion that I have is within the policies and procedures we would need to look at is under Section 3.5 is non-interference with administration. We have a significant portion within this about interference, including in personnel matters. I would, if this is to be entertained further, which I am not sure this is the right mechanism for it, I think there were, there will be some issues that we would have to deal with within policies, procedures. However, that is under the purview of our city manager to establish most of those policies and procedures, so then we go back to having to do charter changes and issues. And so that's why I'm saying I think there's an issue when it works with that.
Could I maybe interject here? There was a young man at a gas station on August 3, 2021, named Presley Easy, who was shot execution style in the back of the head by a Las Cruces Police Department officer. And I believe that the assumption on that officer's part, and I can't speak on what his assumption was, but they treated him as if he was just another young black thug. And it's quite the contrary, because this young man was very well connected to the National NAACP, and that is part of the reason that this investigation has taken us to the Department of Justice because of that particular case and who that young man was. He left a two-year-old son behind, and he was basically, was killed execution style. And so that is part of the problem that we are trying to deal with. We're not trying to violate any officer's rights. We are trying to keep the officers from violating the citizens' rights and/or taking their lives.
If I may jump in real quick?
Yes.
Dr. Green, thank you for that, but usually when I have public comment, and I know you're saying that, I ask that no pending litigation issues be brought up. And if you could, please, I mean, you can say generalities, but I would appreciate if you didn't, because that's still in pending litigation.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I did not bring up pending litigation. What I am working with is within our structures, within our charter and our process that we have here. Yes, you're off the microphone again.
I think I'm on now. I just wanted to say that with regard, and I'll read the provision in the policy manual or whatever.
And Article III within our charter.
I will read all of that, but from what you're saying, it sounds as if you're equating being able to investigate something and make a recommendation to the city manager or to somebody working under him with interference, and that would kind of negate the possibility of any council, any commissions doing anything if advice were interference. So I will read those, though.
Our advice with other boards isn't hiring and firing of city personnel. When we have the Quality of Life Department, I am not giving advice on who to hire and fire. I am not giving advice on who to hire and fire on utilities. I'm not giving advice on who to hire and fire on any of those other boards. This is an entirely new function, which therefore would address in a different way, which is why I might bring it up, because I think it has a crucial impact.
Thank you.
The other structure that I had is that of the education function within this policy and procedure. This is one where I am curious on who has developed programs of education, since it seems like one of the duties of this board is to educate the public. Now, what was a little concerning that was just mentioned offhand, I didn't have this in my notes before, but it said that there has been controversy even with how boards have educated the community that has led to issues, too. So I'd be curious on what type of budget is done within this education? Who makes the curriculum? Who decides on the curriculum? And what type of?
I'm sorry, we must have misspoken if we gave you the idea that it was organized in that fashion, that it was a school or had a curriculum or any such thing. Rather, there are controversies that come out, and the public thinks, oh, that's terrible. And in some cases, and you know, I know some of them myself firsthand, not going to get into it here, the officer was correct and had to do certain things. The public doesn't know that. There might be policies that the police department comes out with. One would hope that after some initial reluctance on the part of the police department and perhaps the union, they would work together on some of these issues. But no, it's not a school, and I think the case that Earl was talking about is one member, as could happen here, none of you, of course, but it could happen on the city council, that one member would go say something that the rest of the world didn't agree with, and there would be a controversy. Well, that's what happened here. Somebody said something, and there were consequences, but it wasn't as part of any organized curriculum from what they told us.
And I appreciate that with the curriculum, but even like what, what is handed out, what is given to the public as far as, and you mentioned a few.
How would we know that in advance?
Well, that's why I'm asking if we're going to put it in writing, then we probably should know what it is that we're asking to do. If we're going to put it in an ordinance and then it becomes law, then I would like to know what I'm putting into law.
I'm sorry, but with all due respect, your.
You can feel that way, that's fine, thank you. But it is a question that I have to ask before I make a decision up here on something like that. So thank you so much, sir. And Mayor, my time is up.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Coran?
Thank you. I have, I have sort of two types of questions, a few related to the process of how we might move forward on a few things that have been discussed, and then also on specific actions that I think we can sort of look to, and I'll ask for follow-up from you all and from our city manager to see what opportunities there might be. Related to the process, and this is somewhat to what a number of folks have mentioned here, I'm curious what the next steps for this particular ordinance would be. I think there are some possibilities. It sounds like it definitely needs to have further review from both internal city folks and sort of a feedback loop and some iterations happening. So I think I would be curious to see where this goes. I would say if it went to the Public Safety Select Committee, I would ask that those meetings be open meetings and that the community folks be able to engage in that context. But I think any number of other places are possible. But I do think it also has to go through a few legal reads on our end. So I'm curious about that. I think that's up for discussion here. I have another process-related question, related specifically to some of the things that Daniel from the ACLU mentioned. I know that the police have their internal policies and procedures, and I actually know that the use of force policy was really updated most recently in 2021. I'm curious what the typical process for updating internal police processes are, and I think there have been some opportunities for us to have a conversation about how we can do that. So that's one of my questions that I would hope we can answer going forward. And then for action, I would, I am curious, because it does sound like as part of what you're proposing or what you're suggesting might be an opportunity, some of, I think, what you're talking about is related to accountability and the disciplinary process to, to police. And I do think that we might be functioning under not necessarily all knowing what's happening right now as it exists, so I would ask that we have a work session on the existing police processes, and that includes a couple of things that we have outstanding. Matrix on disciplinary action, which I know that the chief was working on, and also sort of understanding how the use of force cadre and internal affairs interface and could interface with something like either a hybrid model or a civilian police oversight independent model. So I would like to ask that we hear from the police to understand those mechanisms of accountability that exist, so that that can also inform whatever we, we do next at another work session. And then my last action question is related to the OIR contract. I know that we're under a continuing kind of month-to-month contract related to that, but it does sound like there is consensus around including two new aspects into our OIR contract. That is, one related to some type of community engagement. Your model would include community engagement with a civilian police oversight board or other models that I think that OIR has enacted. But I would ask that when we revisit the OIR contract, we also, I think the plan is to include use of force, randomly selected incidents of use of force, but I would also ask that in addition to that sampling, we include all, in particular related to some of the things that we've really been talking about here, that the OIR contract include that random sampling of use of force, but also any deadly force use gets referred to OIR as well. So I hope that we could include that as a part of our contract when that happens, so that all of these questions, as when OIR has come, I've heard even Dr. Goodman and Dr. Neeson have asked, why didn't you include this incident that we're referring to? And I hope that we can strengthen that in the contract so that all of those use of deadly force, which may or may not result in death, be included as part of the OIR contract. So those are my questions for follow-up and hope for action, that we can sort of have further conversations. And I appreciate you all presenting and considering some of the things that I, questions that I had, I appreciate you answering a lot of those in your presentation, so thank you for that. So that's it.
Thank you. Okay, so let me ask some questions, if I may. So on the first, I guess, second page has here, "All members of the board shall reside in Doñana County." Why not city of Las Cruces? So are you saying that we could appoint county residents to a city, Las Cruces citizens' review board?
That would certainly be my suggestion. I think there are some people who are, who don't live within the city limits but are either prominent citizens or otherwise spend a lot of time in the city and have either expertise or experience of the police that would make them good members. So I wouldn't live in a city, but that's not a decision I would.
I think only ad hoc committees could be, allow county resident, ad hoc committees, committees that aren't permanent. I think only, permanent city committees, they have to be city residents.
If it has to be city residents, we have no problem with that.
So on the next page, it says the board shall have the power to investigate. Can you expand on that? What power were you all looking for? And what, you know, would investigate, investigate why?
Okay. If there would be, let's take an incident that was public and, you know, has been resolved as far as I know, and tell me if, tell me if you don't want me to discuss the Valenzuela.
You don't have to mention names, just hypothetically, please.
Hypothetically, you have a situation that's resulted in somebody's death, and it raises a lot of implications. It may be that the physical actions taken were appropriate under the, first of all, I would hope the board would investigate training and other matters without a specific incident like that and try to improve upon what we have. But there are fair issues, as I mentioned earlier, about whether to use a particular hold, about what justifies chasing somebody down and perhaps getting in a fight. I mean, it's tough. Some of these officers may be put in a position where they're chasing somebody who hasn't done anything all that bad, but the rules say, there's a warrant out on him, I got to get him, and all of a sudden there's a fistfight, they kill somebody. And that, that officer may be a perfect, wonderful person and following the rules, or he may not be.
I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that, Peter. I'll leave it at that so that we can, so I can answer these or get these questions answered and then go move on to the public. One of you said you wouldn't be looking at personnel, and there's a couple things here on item I and J. It says, "The board shall hold public meetings and shall regularly report to the public on its activities and other policing information it determines to be in the public interest." So I would think that, you know, if there is a situation, it's usually just, usually one officer, maybe two, but that's in the public interest, and so how would you not be able to know who that is? Is what I'm trying to get at. Or just the very, very mere fact of it, I think it discloses who it is. And then it says, "The board shall use and establish discipline matrix and guidelines to recommend discipline for outcomes resulting from investigations, complaints filed by the board and/or LCPD." I think Counselor Abeta kind of touched on that a little bit, and, and I have to concur with her that we don't. with her that we don't, we don't get involved in that. And so for us to provide that type of authority to a board when us ourselves don't have that, not saying that we need it, that's why we have Efo here, and his, him and his management team. So can you expand on that a little bit?
I'll take a look at the provision. I think they should be able to do it. Certainly, there should be, or could be restrictions on publicizing information about specific individuals before somebody, before the city's made its decision, and perhaps before the courts have. But the investigation ought to begin before that. Doesn't have to all be public. And as I say, in Boulder, they take, they sign confidentiality agreements. And what would be covered in that?
I'll get to that one in a little bit. So, so let's just use hypothetical, there's a situation that happened, and earlier I thought I heard you say, you, why does something take so long and you want that information out? Did you, did you say that?
Yeah, I said it ought not to take a year and a month and counting to get some statement from somebody about this is all right, and here's why, or we're charging this person, or there's no criminal conduct, but we're disciplining this person, whatever.
Right. It's very common for the city to go into protracted litigation that can take two to three years. So it's almost by the time it's settled, you know, it almost sounds like you want to see the information immediately, and I don't think we can do that. Is that what you're, we're wanting?
I think you probably can do it. I'm very, you know, I've handled litigation that lasted many, many years.
Okay, so let's stop right there. Let's stop right there. So what if that information gets leaked, and now they want to sue the board? Your board, not, and the city? Earlier, I heard you all talking about wanting to reduce liability by the very fact that you, someone, and I've seen it happen years ago, that's why I've been hesitant. But who's gonna, who do you expect to pay for the liability, the claim, the $500,000 they're going to sue a board member for?
I know a really good insurance guy we could consult.
We're not allowed, we're not allowed to provide liability coverage for you? That's something there that you would have to take on your own. That's if you didn't go outside your authority.
Well, that's certainly a reasonable question. If you could not provide liability to the members, I got to guess that that's, you know, I know you're brilliant, but I'm sure that question's been raised in other cities. And I appreciate you bringing it up, and I'll try to find out how it's been solved.
Yeah, the information that I saw that one of our policy analysts gave, none of them have the, that authority that you're asking. They're all advisory, they're like, well, these are the recommendations we made, and I don't think they were talking about. But that's okay, I just.
Well, this is advisory too.
Well, yours is a little bit, yours is a little bit, a bit more, more power there. But that's okay, I just wanted, these are just, these are preliminary questions that, that why I wanted to have our initial discussion first. But, you know, but that's okay, we're good. Let's see here, where was I? Oh, I think it was Dr. Neeson who talked about the budget. It was $50,000 and then $100,000, but I didn't hear the part what OIR charges.
OIR?
Can you talk into the mic, please?
Right now, we're contracted for $75,000, right?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna want to charge us, keep in mind, they only come here every six months, right, to make a presentation.
Yes, it would probably go up.
And, yeah, well, that's why I wanted to know what the price was. That's, if you recall, every time I've mentioned this, I, over and over and over, I ask you, have you checked the price? So you didn't check the prices what OIR charged extra with these other, other cities that they are, have the hybrid model?
Even in Boulder, they're charging by the hour. So they have different kind of contractual arrangements, but I think it was Eureka's budget's $90,000 a year. So when I said 50 or 100,000, it would depend on how many complaints. I mean, if we only have enough for a half-time person, then it'd be 50, I'd be guessing then, but.
Excuse me, I thought the 100,000 was for the budsman or person that was going to be leading this. I didn't know that it was for OIR.
That would be the person who is collecting all of the complaints independently away from the police department and the board. And that person be responsible for making sure that OIR gets all of the complaints. I mean, that's one of our issues here, we're not sure of that. But this person who we'd be paying, let's say, full-time 100,000, would have that responsibility in helping them with the investigations, with involvement of the board and the police department. Be like a liaison person.
Yes, sir. Okay, so the other thing I want to close with, and I'll turn it back to, well, we'll ask for some public input, is two things. I'm sure you're aware, under Chief Dominguez, he, I think this, this upcoming graduation in December will be the first of those officers he recruited with special bonuses, $10,000 or $20,000 if you have psychology background or sociology background. You know, that was, that was in response to some of the concerns, you know, and I think they've all agreed that police officers, they're very multi-talented, but to be able to handle other situations, they're not trained in that. So they have some training, but, but to be able to do that, that's why the chief is focusing on that. One, that's one item. The other is, and thanks to the chief, Smith and Dominguez and the city council really, for funding Project Light, which is now, when you have a situation, you'll have two, you'll have people from the fire department as well as another person who's not a police officer, but has that training to hopefully diffuse situations. So you don't, you don't think that that, that that has shown what the city is trying to do, what the various departments are trying to do to recognize the situations that?
I think we think those are wonderful.
Yeah, so.
Are they all you could do?
But they have, excuse me, but they haven't been given the chance to, they just started. They just started in mid-March 6, I think, was the first day for Project Light. And so, I mean, those are the things that, and we're spending very, we have a good investment in that program. And so I think that that is yet another reason why, you know, I mean, it's not like we're just sitting here not doing anything. The chiefs and the council.
If I may, I think Project Light is modeled on what Portland has, and Portland has the kind of board we're talking about as well. I mean, obviously, you have your opinion, but my response to what you're saying is those are great things, you people should take credit for them. But to me, it's like saying, well, I swept my house, so, you know, I don't need somebody to clean the windows. And that's a silly analogy, but there, you have a red alert situation, and you're taking some steps, but there are more that we think you reasonably could and should.
It's kind of like if I swept the house, and my wife says, no, we're bringing in professionals who can clean this house, okay? So now I'm going to go to members of the public.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I just, can I say one more comment before you go to the public? Thank you, sorry for interrupting you. Just want to make sure I get this last word in. First, I also would like to make a couple of asks to you, all of my colleagues, and of course, the city manager on continued, continuing this conversation. You know, since I've been on city council, all I've known is for us to fully resource the police department. I think we've increased wages, bonuses, positions, vehicles. I think when PD asks for something, this council has provided it. And so to me, it makes then sense that we get to ask for high standards. And I think it is, to me, it's very clear that high, clear, rigorous use of force standards protect everybody involved. They protect constituents and they protect officers involved. And I think we, as a city, should be training from the beginning on high standards and maintaining those high standards as their careers continue with the city police department. And not only do high standards of use of force lead to less injury or worse on both constituents and officers, they lead to significantly less liability, public dollars being used for settlements. And so I really feel like there's a pathway forward, and I hope that there's an open and good faith conversation between us, advocates, PD, around how we go about this. You know, like Counselor Corran said, I think strengthening our use of force policy is necessary. And I would like to continue having that conversation, whether it's in another work session. I think often what I hear from advocates is that there is a lack of data and transparency. The public feel often in the dark about whether it's in the immediate aftermath of a use of force incident, or in general, what is happening with our police department. I think for me, it would be important to better understand the use of force cadre that the police department has implemented. Again, I think there, while there's obvious things that cannot be shared publicly, I think it's, the more we keep things behind closed doors, the more mistrust ensues. And so I think public-facing departments are important to cultivating public trust. And then, of course, yeah, I agree with you, Mayor, I think Project Light is so new and fresh that we have to give it an opportunity to thrive. But that, again, that's a critical piece of the puzzle, because when there's a fire, we send firefighters. When there's a medical emergency, we send paramedics. When there's a mental health crisis, we should send mental health professionals. And I think fire, excuse me, Police Chief Dominguez has said that significant amount of calls, more and more, to the 911 system are mental health-related. And so I think implementing and investing in alternate solutions is critical, and I hope we continue doing that, and I hope we continue to see that project expand in whichever form. And so I, whether this happens at the next OIR report or sooner, hopefully, I want, I personally want to see those conversations continue to happen. Counselor Corran, I can continue talking to the city manager, but I at least, you know, want a commitment that this conversation will continue, because regardless on whether you fall on the spectrum of you agree with this particular solution or not, the wider conversation around use of force and implementing high standards, I think, is necessary.
Okay, well, see what you started, so Counselor Flotus wants to say something.
No, I just want to add, no, I just want to clarify that our police department does get extensive training. How do I know? I went to one of their training sessions. And, and I happen to know the attorney out of Los Angeles that does a training, who was a previous police officer, and they are given very clear parameters. And in fact, the fire department was there too. I don't know if chief was there. I know chief, Chief Dominguez was there, Chief Smith, I believe, was there too. Firefighters were there. But I just want you to know that our police officers do get extensive training. And Ms. Yelin, the attorney who trained them, is a previous police officer, and it was quite detailed. And just sitting there as a, you know, just as a non-officer, it was exhausting. And believe me, I would never, never, never be a police officer. It's bad enough being, never mind. But it, I just want you to know that it isn't as if our police officers, and when you think of all the things that can go wrong and do go wrong, we're fortunate that more things don't go wrong. And my humble opinion on that, for what it's worth, which is probably peanuts, but from the peanut gallery, I would like to say that there has to be more psychological profiling and assessments as to someone who can really handle that job. I personally, not because I'm only five foot three and this and that, but psychologically, I wouldn't be able to handle it. You know, even if I were six foot four and 360 pounds, I wouldn't be able to handle it. So I just want you to know, folks, that it isn't as if the police department is just, you know, having donuts somewhere and kind of just taking off willy-nilly. And we have had very unfortunate situations, without a doubt, but there's so many hours that have to be fulfilled on this, that, and the other. So there you have it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I want to say a closing comment, and then I'll turn it over to members of the public, because you reminded me of something I thought you were going to mention about when some of us went to the, the training at the community college. But, you know, but earlier, I guess it was probably, I don't know, 10 years, 20, 12 years ago, I was selected to go to the Citizens Academy for the FBI. And so I went to that, and it was really, it was six weeks, it was a great training, and they concluded with this, this video. I mean, it was so realistic, it's very similar to the one at Doñana Community College, but the FBI had their own. And, you know, it was incredible. It was so realistic that.